Thank you, everybody, for coming to our special meeting today. And it's a joint meeting with the City Council and the Planning Commission. Mr. DeVries, can you?
Recording in progress.
Great. Now you get to get recorded, Mr. DeVries. Can you come up here and maybe do some introductions? That would be great. This is kind of an exciting meeting. I get to, we get to sit back and kind of listen and learn and see what direction we get to go, right?
Yeah, good evening. We're excited to be here to kick off the Wenatchee Urban Area Comprehensive Plan Update. It's been a few years and a long time since the city's had a visioning exercise. And we have about a year and a half process ahead of us. And we'd like to highlight that and do some fun, interactive exercises tonight to kick things off. So thank you, Planning Commission members and council members, for holding this joint session. And as far as agenda tonight, after a brief introduction, Steve Nguyen-Chandra is going to do an overview of comprehensive planning, our Assistant Director. And then, let me see, Mia Bretz and Matt Parsons are going to cover, review the 2024 Housing Market Study findings from BURK, which will be a big part of this process. And then our consultant team, which will introduce, is going to be doing visioning and engagement, next steps, and time for questions and answers. Just a brief introduction of staffing and the city team. While the Community Development Department will coordinate and lead this process as planners, this really isn't, this is all hands on deck. Every single department is involved in this plan update. It affects every department. And we're looking forward to that interactive process with all of the other team members. And like to introduce our consultant team. We feel really blessed to be working with BURK, Makers, Transpo, and Parametrics on this process. And we've got some good grants. And then also appreciate the resources that the council dedicated towards this update process. And here tonight, we have Jesse Hartman. She is our project lead and manager amongst the consultants. She's with BURK and is also the housing and CIPA lead for this process.
Maybe you could at least raise your hand or something. If you don't mind, just so we try to get a picture, that'd be great. Thank you.
And then we have Bob Benford and Scott Bandukian with Makers. They're no stranger to this area. Let me see, Bob goes all the way back to our Wenatchee waterfront plan. It's been a very successful. And then also, we have our housing code update and our sign code update. So we're very pleased that they could be here tonight and be part of this process. And with that, I'm going to step aside. And Steve Nguyen-Chandra is going to do a comprehensive plan update for our process.
Thanks, Glenn. Good evening, council members, mayor, and the Planning Commission. So, right, like Glenn said, I'm just going to provide a brief overview of comprehensive planning, why we plan, what the purpose of it is, and kind of what we, the context of that. Before that, some key terms that we use a lot. And you'll hear throughout the process and this evening, GMA, which is the Washington State Growth Management Act. That's a series of state statutes that guide local government, cities and counties, in how we grow and develop. It requires that we establish an urban growth boundary, which is the next key term, which really is the urban area that surrounds the city of Wenatchee. So the map on the right, the blue dash line, that's our city limits. The red line that goes around it, that is the extent of the urban growth boundary, urban growth area. And so as we plan, we are planning for everything inside of the red urban growth area boundary. And so we're planning beyond the city limits. And we work in collaboration with Chelan County for those unincorporated areas. And they'll be a part of our process throughout the conversation. And then the last key term that I want to just cover real quick is the comprehensive plan. And that really is our policy guidance document. And it will, it is what guides growth in the city. So when, when the Planning Commission is looking at code amendments, when we bring amendments to you, as we apply for grants as city staff, we go back to the city's comprehensive plan. And if those projects and concepts are in the comprehensive plan and we can make those connections, it strengthens those grant applications. And again, as we look at revisions to our development regulations, we go back. What is the vision of the community? Where do we want to be? What is our purpose? And then we make sure that those development regulations are consistent with that comprehensive plan. So it really is the key document here for the city to guide how and where we grow. So that transitions into the next slide, right? Why are we planning? Really, why we plan is because we love our community, right? And the purpose of that plan is to set direction. It's to set vision. Where do we want to be? Where are we now? And where are we going? And how are we going to get there? But at the core, it's that why, right? As a community, what are our set of core values? Why do we live here? Why do we choose to work here? Why do we choose to shop in the city or the urban area of Wenatchee? That comes down to that core. And so periodically, so the last comprehensive plan update was in 2017. And so the Growth Management Act requires that periodically we review our comprehensive plans and make adjustments as needed. And so we're in that next cycle. And like Glenn said, our adoption is due in June of 2026. And overall, the goal is to maximize the health, safety, the economic well-being of our community, and to keep it a great place to live, to work, to visit. A place that our children can come back to and buy or build homes, have jobs, and continue our legacies here in the valley. So this, again, does stem from the Growth Management Act, our requirement to periodically review our comprehensive plan. On the image on the right identifies, so the state divides all the counties into annual update timeframes. Ours is the gray, 2026. So Chelan, Douglas, Kitataas, Yakima, and other counties, we're in that same cycle that have that same requirement update. So in the comprehensive plan, the information is broken down into a series of elements. These are focus areas. So we have required elements in the Growth Management Act that we look at land use, housing, our capital facilities, utilities, transportation. And new, this update cycle is a climate change element. So we'll, we have a grant from the Department of Commerce. And we'll be working through, looking at how climate change affects the community and how we can be more resilient to the impacts of wildfire, flooding, et cetera. Additional elements that we have in our comprehensive plan that guide this conversation are economic development, our culture and our historic preservation element, community design, parks and recreation, our natural element. And then we have a variety of subarea plans, such as Glenn mentioned, the waterfront subarea plan. We have a South Wenatchee subarea plan and a North Wenatchee subarea plan and others. So as, as we plan, we don't do that in a vacuum. Obviously, we have to know where we are and where we're going. And so we forecast, the Office of Financial Management at the state provides each of the counties a forecasted population growth number. And so we then work collaboratively. We have worked collaboratively with the cities in Chelan County, as well as the county. And based off of historic growth patterns and trends, we divide up that population growth allocation among the cities and the rural county. We also do a forecast based off of that population growth of the number of housing units that we would need based off of our average household size and other demographic information. So as we look forward to 2046, we're looking at a population of almost 50,000 and needing 6,275 housing units. That's a lot of housing units and a lot of people to accommodate over the 20-year horizon. So as, as we work through this process, we'll be talking to the Planning Commission and to you, asking very difficult questions about what are the barriers to achieving these, these goals or these numbers of population growth and housing? We'll have surveys that will go out. We want to hear from the community of how should we grow as a city, as an urban area? We want to hear from everyone throughout this process. So we're working on, it's called a land capacity analysis. So that's an internal look at our community, how many vacant properties are still left out there? How many properties can be redeveloped? And do we have enough land in our urban area to accommodate the growth? We'll be looking at housing. Obviously, it's a big conversation in our community and across the state of making sure that everyone that lives here has a place to live and accommodating that growth. We'll be looking at jobs and our economic vitality as a community, where we're going and where we need to supplement and focus our economic growth. Transportation, a huge conversation, right? We want to, that coupled with our utilities and capital facilities, we want to make sure that as we grow and as we plan for that growth, that we're growing in areas that have our utility infrastructure, that have streets and roads that can accommodate that growth or can be improved to accommodate the demand for new housing developments. And as I mentioned, we'll also be covering climate change, which is a new element in the comprehensive plan. So we'll be looking at, again, how can we be more resilient to the effects of changing the climate? As I mentioned, we're, we're looking at population change over time. And within that, we are also required to plan for all economic segments of our community. And so rather than just planning for growth, we are planning for growth in, to meet the needs of individuals that are currently experiencing homelessness, to those who are over 120% of the area median income, and everybody in between, right? Our community is for the community. And so we're planning for everyone. And that'll be a big part of our conversations. And then just as a segue into the next section with Matt and Mia, our project schedule is really broken down into four phases. We're in Phase One, which is our launch and learn, where we have an engagement plan. We'll have a lot of visioning conversations. Tonight's the beginning of that. And we'll go out into the community, meet with groups, and talk to folks. And then we'll evaluate the comprehensive plan. We'll draft amendments to that. And then the final phase is adoption of that document. And with that, I'm going to turn the time over to Matt and Mia. And they're going to talk about the Housing Market Study and the demographics and the housing trends that we've seen over the last number of years.
Hi there. I'm Mia Bretz, Associate Planner.
I'm Matt Parsons, Senior Planner.
And we're going to go through a bunch of data today. So we decided that we'd just tag-team it, so it might be a little more interesting, maybe.
I'm going to start by talking about the purpose of the study. The study was commissioned, was paid for by the city. So thank you to those who approved the 2023 budget. This study has been incredibly helpful and will continue to be incredibly helpful for the work that we'll be doing for the, for the community. This, this study was a little bit different than some previous studies. Any council members who've been on, while maybe, or might be familiar with the 2016 Housing Study that we did almost a decade ago. And the scope for this one is a little different. That was for the broader area, including East Wenatchee. And this is just for the Wenatchee urban growth area and city limits. So there are some main components of this study. First, it's kind of a typical housing study portion, just analyzing how market trends in the Wenatchee urban area. So demographics and needs and production, as well as affordability. And then this next part, identifying barriers to infill and development. There was a specific context with some recent legislation that this was speaking to. However, we would always be looking at infill and redevelopment in light of our geographic constraints. And in addition to identifying the barriers, it also recommended actions. We had, as you know, we've done some code updates in 2019, and we had some data to look at. And so we had some, the consultants were able to look at that, look at our code, and analyze and see what the barriers were and make recommendations. And that's been really, really helpful. And then specifically in light of the comprehensive plan, there are some parts that are related to the land capacity analysis. There's some, the unique approaches that we'll need to take in order to justify that we have enough capacity. Not only changing the codes, but how we do the analysis to demonstrate that we can meet the targets that was at that table that Steve was talking about with our projected growth for population and housing. And then also the recommended actions for making adequate provisions. That's kind of showing that we're making enough efforts to improve the situation with housing.
So today, we're just going to cover the first part of what the study covered, which are really the demographics and the study itself. The recommendations we will discuss as we move forward with our comprehensive planning with you guys. So this graph is showing total population growth since 2016 in Wenatchee compared to some other eastern Washington cities and to Chelan County. And as you can see, Wenatchee is kind of the dark blue line there in the middle. We are falling in kind of a steady growth pattern compared to our other cities and growing slower than the county overall. In terms of population change by race, in 26, in 2021, we saw a big shift in other races and kind of decline in the percentage of white alone. The two main groups here that we're seeing are the white alone and the Hispanic or Latino of any race.
Another part that we looked at is housing tenure or the kind of the terms in which someone is occupying a housing unit. So 44% of households are renters in the city of Wenatchee. And you'll notice in the, in the chart that that's the highest, only behind Yakima. And so higher, higher than Chelan County as a whole and most of our pure cities. And then we also looked at housing inventory by type. And you'll notice that we actually have the highest percentage of single family compared to a lot of these other peer jurisdictions. It is, I will note that the data is a, it's a, from 2017 to 2021, five-year estimate. And so there is some recent development, particularly some multifamily projects that wouldn't be included in this. And so these numbers probably have shifted. Well, in more recent data sets, they'll probably look a little different. But also, these other jurisdictions have probably had some additional building going on. And I'll also note that we have a relatively small share of middle housing. So the, kind of the light blue and the red are the duplexes and three to four units. And that's the portion that we just, end of last year, for those who are on the council, that's did our middle housing code update. And so we're targeting those to increase.
Great. This is a chart showing the spread of income in the city compared to in the county. So the county line is the dotted black line. You can see on, let's see if I can do a cursor. No. On the left there, the county line is lower than the city, showing that the city has a higher percentage of lower-income households. And then on the right, we can see that dotted line above the gray bars showing that the county has a higher percentage of higher-income households than in the city. The housing cost burden is referring to the amount of income that goes to pay for housing costs. So a cost burden is considered when you're paying 30% or more of your income. So those are the blue categories. A severe cost burden would be if you're paying 50% or more. So that's the darker blue. So you can see that for all households in the city, a quarter of our residents are cost burdened. And for renters, 40% of renters are cost burdened.
Our rental housing costs have increased significantly, up to close to around $1,500 a month for, for a rental unit. So you'll need about $60,000. A household needs about $60,000 to afford that rent. And about 65% of the renter households in Wenatchee have an income that's lower. And they rose dramatically through mid-2022. So they've stabilized a bit. One kind of anecdotal add about this is when this was done, in 2023 is when most of the work happened. And we just had a minor uptick of vacancy rate. And so some things were just starting to shift at that time. And so you can kind of see that we've had some, a lot of buildings, buildings coming online and things have leveled off a bit, but it still remains very, very high. And then, as a counter to that, ownership. So had a steep, particularly in recent years, a very steep increase. This chart goes back to 2009. So you can kind of see where it bottomed out and then rose steadily and then more steeply in recent years. So median sales price for a single family, 561,000 townhomes, which just kind of in the last decade, we've seen that as kind of added as a category. And so that's a nice lower price point. So still, you know, expensive, but a nice addition to the inventory. And so if you look down at the bottom right here, so the median household income, 66,143 in 2022. And then the income needed for those, for those, to qualify for a mortgage for those median prices. So single, for a single family, the household has to earn 136,790. And for a townhome, 93,849. So still higher than, than the median, but the townhomes are a big help there.
Great. So this is a busy image. It's showing us the complexity of income to housing prices, really. And it's doing that in two main ways. The top is showing us how jobs in the area correspond to different income levels. And it's showing household size and the variation of how the size of a household impacts the cost associated with the household needed for, you know, for the, for that size. So, for example, one person at the 80% to 120% income, a moderate income level, would need to earn $67,000 in order to pay housing costs of about 1,700. Versus a family of four would need to earn $96,000 in order to cover housing costs that would be closer to $2,400. So you can see that a registered nurse is earning about that much. So you can look at elementary school teachers, firefighters, carpenters, waitstaff, cashiers. These, these jobs would not accommodate a family of four.
All right. And then this is the, you saw this, this chart earlier when Steve was talking. It's kind of, I'm going to bring it back. These are, on the right are the targets that we are going to be demonstrating how we have capacity and are making adequate provisions to see. And so basically, the way this works is we will be demonstrating that we have zoning capacity and then also with things that are below market rate, we'll be showing, we'll be showing how we have the right programs that we're making progress and trying to address the units that need to be below market rate for the people in those income brackets. So looking at that, I'll bring it back. In the bottom right, so that's 6,275, that's the total number of units. So this is kind of the complex view. The simplified view is just total units. So if that's extrapolated on an annual basis out to 2046, that means every year, we need to be building 241 new units. And just, just on a total unit basis. And based on the recent permit data when this study was done, we were building about 126. So just over, we'd need to almost double the, how many units that are coming online just to keep up with that, at that pace to meet that, to meet that target. This image shows, so it's comparing current stock to what we need to build. And so the, the blue is based on some data from the Census Bureau, what's, what's built as of when, when that data came in. And then the orange is based on that allocation, what, what needs to be added. One caveat, the kind of the gray checkered on that 120, that they, the data didn't, couldn't parse it out in the unincorporated urban growth area. And so they put it all there. We know that there are some more affordable older housing stock in that area. So that would get distributed in those lowers. However, I think the narrative on this image is, would really be the same, that there's still additional units that would need to be built at every, at every income bracket. And then this image is showing recent production. And so we were particularly interested by this image. And, you know, there, I think there was, so the, if the text is too small for you, the, the dark blue is single family. And the orange is multifamily with five or more units in the structure. And I think there were some multifamily that were kind of in earlier, recent earlier years. But generally, we were not seeing that many multifamily built. And I believe that the one in 2014 there, I think that's, most or all of that is Riverside Nine, which is kind of the culmination of about a decade-long process of planning and infrastructure improvements on the waterfront. And some other kind of important dates, not trying to assign causation, but I think there's some notable kind of legislative changes that happened that kind of can inform some of these, these shifts. So in 2017, there was a change in the multifamily, multifamily tax exemption program, where it was expanded substantially to cover a good bit of kind of our core city area. And whether that has any relation to the, to the projects that came after that, we're not sure. But I think it's a notable thing, thing to point out there. And then in late 2019 was the housing code update. And so that was adopted at the end. And so I think it went into effect sometime in mid-December. So effectively, in terms of seeing the effect of that, you're looking at 2020 and onward is where those projects would have been reviewed under the new housing code update. So, and then I think another notable aspect there is that townhouses, just the way the Office of Financial Management categorizes them, they're actually under single family. So we've seen a good number of townhouse projects come through, but that's actually in the dark blue part of that. So it's not in the, in the orange where we may have otherwise assumed that it would be. That's just how, they're considered attached single families is the category. So just as you're kind of thinking about this, any, any townhouse projects you've seen, that's, that's not in the orange there. And then also, a notable thing to notice here, the, the light blue and the red, that's, that's the duplexes and three to four units. So what we've been calling middle housing. And so there's not much of that you'll, you'll see as you go through here. And, which is a reason that we brought that, the code amendments to the end of last year. And thank you for approving those. And hopefully that'll be, we'll see a shift in future, future data sets.
Great. To wrap up this story, Wenatchee has a steady population growth that is shifting by race. We have a high rental population compared to the US and Washington and our county overall. We have a large share of residents that We have a large share of residents that make less than median income compared to our the county. We have low stock of middle housing and a high stock of single-family housing. And a quarter of all of our households are cost burdened. A single-family home has to be can only be afforded by income levels of one hundred and seventy percent of our median and family income. And carpenters and firefighters make about one hundred percent of family median income and can afford a one-to-two-bedroom apartment. Producing about we produce about half of the housing needed annually for all income levels. So we already have a deficit of units and we are producing a deficit of units as well. And and we have a high need for the middle housing types in particular. Great. So our next steps in housing, how this is relevant to the comp plan process overall. We we took this image from our Valley Our Futures two thousand twenty-two Regional Housing Survey Findings Report. And this was just a community question based on, you know, what people's perspectives were. So our data shows that we have high housing needs and we're hearing from our community that that they care about this issue a lot as well. While our state Growth Management Act is requiring us to plan for all levels of housing, it's also something that we want to do as a community. It's something that we're finding a high need for as well. So as we began our comprehensive plan update process, we're excited to engage and vision with our community about solutions to this problem and ways that people are interested in in getting engaged and in seeing these changes happen in Wenatchee to provide more housing for for all of our residents.
All right. And this point, I think we're handing back handing over to our consultant team. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Jesse Hartman again with Burke Consulting. Really nice to be here. See all of you in person and actually just a pretty great turnout, I think, from the public as well. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the kind of engagement plan and how that fits in the overall project phases that Stephen was talking about earlier. So these are the same four that you saw earlier with launch and learn, evaluate and engage, the draft plan and EIS, and then which is the environmental impact statement or the environmental review we have to do along with that. And then the kind of the final plan and final environmental review and adoption. So this is some of the kind of key activities and goals that we're hoping to do in each of the phases. The first one we're in right now with this kind of initial kickoff. We'll be doing some visioning exercises a little bit later tonight. Also doing probably some stakeholder interviews with some some that are topic-specific like housing and some that are kind of broader to get some initial ideas. Forming our our housing focus group and the climate policy advisory team. And then also building just awareness internally within the city staff, since they will be heavily involved across departments in this update. But the the really the goal in that first phase is to just make sure that we're keying in on what your most important principles are, and that will guide the rest of the update moving forward. The next phase is really about kind of building awareness in the community and gathering some initial input from community on on the broader comp plan, but also specific priorities. So we'll be doing some community group discussions where we either kind of can they they can go a few ways. But some of them will we may be facilitating some, we may be kind of providing materials for people to have discussions that we can kind of then listen into and hear. There'll be some pop-up events where we're attending events that are already happening in the community. So trying to meet people where they are and just kind of generally build awareness. We'll be holding those those specific housing and climate meetings with the the focus groups. And then some of the initial planning commission and council meetings to talk about early ideas on the plan, see what you're thinking on individual elements or pieces of that. And then the EIS scoping is the first stage of environmental reviews. So going out with some some growth alternatives or land use alternatives for the the public and and others to to comment on. But getting some ideas about what we should be looking at from the both natural and built environment perspective of potential impacts of growth. The next stage, we'll have a draft plan and EIS, so really collecting feedback from the public on those drafts. There will probably be some sort of open house activity for that. But it's the more kind of formal comment period for both of those. We'll also have meetings with planning commission and council to go over what's in those draft plans. And then bringing the final phase, I'm realizing the key activities are duplicated from phase three. So those are wrong. But really responding to the comments that we hear in phase three, more of the kind of formal legislative process where we're coming back to you and picking a preferred growth alternative or land use alternative and working through that to adoption. So some of our kind of key engagement messages and goals throughout this, we want to make sure that we are building lasting relationships and trust with the community. And that the engagement is robust and inclusive, and it kind of is representative of your diverse community. The comp plan is a really wonderful opportunity to engage with strength in existing relationships, but also to build new ones with historically underrepresented groups in in the city. We want to make sure we're hearing from a wide range of voices and that that's really representative of of your community at large. That also gets into engaging impacted communities, so identifying people who are most impacted by some of the key issues around things like housing and climate. And that we are we are actively seeking out ways to involve and engage with those groups. We also want to recognize that you've done prior outreach for other other city initiatives. So we want to build on that outreach when we can. So what have we already heard? What concerns? What priorities do we want to continue to move forward? What are maybe not applicable anymore? But make make a clear connection between what you've already heard from the community and how that's being kind of incorporated into the comp plan. We want to make sure that everybody it's informed and inclusive dialogue that empowers all groups in the community. So really making sure that everybody has equal access to information and that stakeholders, staff, the the decision-makers, members of the public can all kind of have an equal access and voice in that. The other piece we've kind of talked about is effectively communicating all those new state requirements. So mostly around housing and climate, but meeting making sure you're you have at you're you're adequately providing housing for all at income segments of the population. But they also have a variety of types of housing that people have options and choice. And there's also choice in how you meet those new requirements. So communicating that with the public as well, that there isn't a one-size-fits-all approach. We have some ideas, but we want to hear what works best here. And then the final thing is just allowing room for our engagement strategies to adapt throughout the process. So if something isn't working, we don't want to continue to do that. And if we're not hearing from the people we are hope to hear them from, we want to kind of take a step back, reassess, see if we can find another way to to engage them in the process. Because this really is a, you know, once every ten years. So it's important for the community. And with that, I'm going to actually hand it over to Bob and Scott to talk about visioning, which is this first piece of everything.
Thanks, Jesse. Good evening. I'll stand here and Scott will stand there. Bob, Bob Banford and Scott Dunjuk in for Makers. Good to be here, Mayor, council members and planning commissioners. So let's talk about visioning a little bit. Our so we're working off a two thousand seven vision statement. And as I say here, let's just say that a lot has changed since two thousand seven. I've I I got to be involved in the waterfront planning way back in two thousand two and to two thousand four, I believe, and and a number of other efforts. And it's amazing how much has changed. We got to go on an epic road tour today for about three and a half hours that Stephen led us on. It showed us all parts of town. And what's really cool to see are just all the new development and the projects. We Scott and I both helped out on the residential code project and the design standards. And we're really seeing it happen now. I mean, you've all been here, I guess, for a while. But for us to come back, we did this tour about six years ago and got to see some of the projects then. And now just the number and scale, you know, large projects, small projects, infill. So it's really happening. But now we're we'd like to help you take some of the next steps. And and we're helping out with the larger comp plan here. So and part of that is a vision statement. You got a really long and involved vision statement, as you can see there on your screen, with a very interesting illustration that I'm not sure how much relates to Wenatchee. But so I think it we probably just need to start from scratch on that. And I think that's what we're going to do. And we'll start with some exercises tonight. And we're also working on a survey that Scott will talk about that will help us begin to see how we can create a vision statement. And as we say here, it lays out the city's most important aspirations and priorities. And it should be what really helps guide the the plans, goals and and policies. So that Scott, take the next slide here.
Thanks, Bob. So Jesse mentioned one of the first pieces of public engagement we're going to do in this process early on is what we're calling a visioning survey. And the survey itself is an important goal in that it's going to collect important feedback. But it's also got another purpose of kickstarting people's public awareness of this comprehensive planning process. So hopefully, when people see this and learn about it through the various communication methods that the city has with its citizens through online email and getting copies in their utility bills, that'll help them get engaged into the comp plan process overall. But as far as the specific survey itself, we do want to start at a broad level, looking at visioning, updating that vision statement to reflect the current population and the current trends in Wenatchee. And one of the we'll go into a couple of test questions in a minute here. But we like to kind of frame it as what people love about the city, what they are concerned about and what they hope to see in the future. We think kind of captures some important themes that help filter down into all the elements that we're going to be working on. In addition to the general broad vision, this is an opportunity to insert some other strategic questions that working with staff that we think might be helpful at this early points to help the the full team. Also asking some questions about housing, transportation, the environment and other things like that. We are planning to offer an incentive to help increase survey participation with a raffle for some gift cards. We're primarily going to host this online, but there will be a shorter version, a two-page version that is mailed out to everyone who receives a utility bill. So that's an option to if you're short on time or or don't want to fill out a longer survey, that'll be an option encountered as well. And we're planning to start hopefully with the next billing cycle in a few weeks. And then the survey will be open for about eight weeks or so. Make sure we get a long time and it gestates in the community and get some hopefully as much feedback as possible. So that we would like to do a test of a few of the questions just to see how people react to some of these visioning questions and get some initial feedback on the answer choices. And maybe if we can make some adjustments before we do final publication. So everyone in the room is welcome to to participate on your phone or or other device. So the way to participate tonight is by going to mentee.com on your on your web browser on your phone and entering the code on the screen, which is one, six, zero, eight, seven, five, three, five. Or you can scan the QR code. So I'll I'll give folks a couple of minutes to set that up.
And I'll just add, this is this is a simple exercise, but it's something that we've been doing. And it 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 never it always seeks to fascinate me what comes out of these exercises. And really helpful and it's good for just for everybody to hear. And by doing it on the phone is kind of cool because everybody's logging in their results and they pop up on the screen. And it's it's kind of fun to to see it happen. And it is relatively fast, too.
And I should add, the results are anonymous and every question, of course, is optional. So. Anyone having issues participating? Okay. What's that? Oh, yeah. Yep. That's the right screen. So let's see if this works on my end. Okay. So the first one's a little test question, multiple choice. Being the apple capital of the world, we'd like to just get a pulse on what your favorite apple variety is.
My apple's not there.
What's your favorite apple?
I baked with Fuji.
What is the third number again?
We need to go to my apple.
Can we put it up?
Two Gray Smith, the one Fuji.
Yes.
That's a good ratio. Yeah, that sounds good.
Pie recipe.
Yeah, sorry. Here we go.
Is that good? Are we good? I think we're good.
So yeah, if we're going to see the results live, so maybe we will go through all the questions and come back to the results in a minute, if that's all right. Okay. But I can just verbally mention Honeycrisp is the winner, twelve results, followed closely by Cosmic Crisp at ten results. All right. Thank you. Next question, just to get a read of the audience today, just curious, who's a a city official versus general public or media? So we've got seven city staff and nine audience members participating and our council members and planning commissioners. Thanks. All right. This next one is a kind of a drag and drop exercise where there's a maybe a small map on your screen. But you can drop the dot roughly in the neighborhood where you live to try to indicate what part of Wenatchee you live in. And the the map here is broken up by character areas that the city uses to apply its design standards to to new construction.
If you live on the edge, just just guess. Look at the map and guess.
If you live outside this area, too, maybe you can drop it outside.
There we go. Yeah, we can see a lot of dots.
Seen a lot of.
This is great. It's scattered all around the the area here. So this is good. We'll be able to we'll be able to what at the end, we'll be able to show.
Yeah, I'll have to log in with my account on the computer here at the end.
So we'll be able to show it. Can't get in now.
So just to verbally mention, it looks like most folks live in area three, kind of in the center of town, west of downtown, then kind of scattered around everywhere else. All right. It's great to know. All right. Next question. So we mentioned the what you love about Wenatchee. So we put a lot of thought in the brainstorming some of these answer choices based on staff's perspective and results from other engagements. So there's twelve options. You can pick up the five. And then the the actual survey that goes out to the community will have some options for people to submit other responses as well.
Of course, when we bring this out to the community, it's going to be in English and Spanish.
Yes, there will be a Spanish copy. Oh, yeah. All right. So top things I'm seeing so far are the beautiful setting of the natural environment, access to public parks, there's a vibe in small-town feel, walkable and bikeable, local businesses and agricultural history. So not too surprising, but yeah, I think that's really helpful to show that.
These are all of them? Are there any other ones?
I think that's it so far. Yeah.
The lowest is easily accessible public transportation, four percent.
So, yeah, this is really great to help kind of along with the specific themes, also thinking about the word choice for an updated vision statement. All right. Our next question about is asking what you're most concerned about for Wenatchee, either or either today or maybe in the next few years. You know, we heard from city staff about cost of living and affordable housing primarily. But we've got a lot of lot of other topics here on public safety and. And the economy and other aspects.
We can, does the HDMI is the connection, maybe when you ask the question, if you don't mind connecting, just going back and forth, then it's a little tricky. Then we all get to see.
Yeah.
The results live.
Yeah, actually I've got a adapter I can grab real quick. Yeah, I need it.
Yeah. In the meanwhile, let's see what we got here. Biggest concern here so far, homelessness and associated community impacts, cost of living. And lack of affordable housing, those are pretty similar, are next. Some other ones, public health issues like aging, mental health, addiction. A need for more living wage jobs and/or job training, those are. Crime, public safety, 35%, is that working? Hopefully we'll, hopefully this will work.
We'll see.
It's supposed to pop up?
Might take a second.
He's working on it.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, thanks for your patience. Alright.
So there you go.
And. Next, thinking even longer term, you know, maybe some of us are thinking about our children or our grandchildren or retirement age. What do you hope happens in Wenatchee over the next 20 years? So asking about some similar issues, but trying to think optimistically on a lot of topics.
Just click every single one. Maybe when we're done, we can go back, look at the results and just talk about it for a minute.
Alright, so far I'm seeing a lot of interest in downtown being a thriving place. Sufficient supply of housing.
You didn't choose that, did you, Rosa?
Well-maintained infrastructure. And not as much interest in public spaces and programming or neighborhood identity. Okay.
Great, I think we might have one or two left.
There's a few people still adding them in, so let's just wait a minute here.
Great.
Twenty-five, that's about almost all of them.
Alright.
Maybe we.
Went down. People are changing their answers, that's cheating.
Changing their answers. Maybe we go back real quick and we could just.
Sure, real briefly, so just the visual one, what people love.
Yeah, so here's vision loves and anybody care to elaborate on this? So we could see we got, it's, I mean, it's pretty obvious, this, the setting here, especially today. Is, is beautiful, so between that and the number two. The vibe, small-town and feel, sense of community and then access to parks, mountains. But anyone, I don't know, anybody wanna elaborate while we're here on this? Or, or the screen pretty much tells the story.
Alicia does.
Yes.
Well, I'm happy to see the vibes, we get this. It's, it's notable to me that. Few people feel it's a safe place to live. I think that that's, that's an interesting thing right there.
Few people or?
What, that, right, what do you love about it? That the community feels like it's a safe place to live, so if it's only 19%.
Oh, yeah.
Am I interpreting that right, that?
Yeah.
The difference.
Yeah.
Is the number of people who don't think it's a safe place to live. And I think that's a shift.
So I only picked one.
You're too late. Any other comments or?
Alright. So here's the concerns.
The flip side. Pretty, pretty typical stuff here, homelessness, housing. So homelessness is number one and associated impacts. Lack of affordable housing, cost of living, the top three. Any, any other comments on this? I think we're trying to do what we can on this issue and hopefully with this plan, that's how we can make an impact with some of these things. It's, you know, interesting that the state is really trying to address the, the income levels and not. As Steven or Jesse mentioned, or maybe it was Matt or Mia, about that we have to, we can't just plan for just growth. But we also have to deal with the income, different income levels and just recognize that we have to plan for that. And we're doing it in, in all the cities. So it's, it's harder, but it's probably a good thing given all these concerns and challenges. That we are going through here and in other cities. Let's go to the next one then.
A question sir.
Oh, sure.
As far as other cities, is there bigger samples, a survey sample that we can say like. Are Wenatchee people, do they feel more unsafe than people elsewhere? You know, like, is it, how do we, like, how do you?
How do we compare with other cities on that? That's very interesting. We just did, we had some, but we just did, we're working with Port Angeles, which is actually kind of a. If I think of some of the more similar cities in the state, that's probably somewhat similar because it's got, it's. It's got its natural beauty, it's got some housing issues. As I was telling staff, I think you're about 15 years ahead of them in terms of getting actual housing production. Because they're, they're out on the edge and they just, they don't have many people working on that. So they're, but their prices aren't as bad yet either. But, you know, they've got their safety issues and concerns too, but it would be interesting to compare. We've got some similar elements in their surveys, so it would be interesting to check that out.
Yeah, maybe we could look into some other communities in the region if they've done, you know, public surveys over the last few months or right now. And see if they have similar questions, we could try to compare that.
But the housing crunch and issue is just, it's everywhere. I mean, Anacortes, down south in the southern part of the state, Spokane. It's, it's just everywhere, it's, it's crazy.
Alright. Uh, let's see, last question here is open-ended. I don't know, there's a, it's like we got three text fields, so the question is what three words describe your ideal vision of Wenatchee? And that could be related to the previous questions we just had or something completely new and that's personal or a priority for yourself. Speaking of affordable. And I'm sure the online version of this, we can probably make it a little bit more flexible if you have more words to add. Uh, see, but yeah, mostly seeing affordable, safe, walkable, active. Well-maintained infrastructure, that's three words by itself. Sustainable growth, livable, so, yeah, similar themes, I think. Little mentions of welcoming, diverse, historic, vibrant, so. Not dissimilar from a lot of communities, a lot, like Bob was saying, a lot of similar priorities around the state, but. I think there's ways to craft this and tailor, make it to Wenatchee.
More answers? Yes, yes.
It's a very fun exercise.
Yeah, yeah, it's interesting.
Tourism is mentioned.
Walkable, welcoming.
Families.
Of course, part of it, when you, when you see it, you might get ideas from other, other peoples and use their words.
So you can't leave it up too long, yeah. Alright, I think that's mostly everyone.
Okay, thank you, that's great.
Great, thank you very much for participating.
So do we switch back to the other one?
Yeah.
Okay. Bear with us.
So those were a preview of the, the visioning questions we'd like to put in the survey. And we welcome feedback on, on how those went or the way they were phrased. In addition to that, there's a, a few other themes of survey questions, and that is community, mobility, mobility and environment. The community section we have right now is, got the most questions. And we've really focused it again on those character areas, lacking a kind of a more formal division of the city by neighborhood or sub areas. And we think it's a good way to kind of break down the city in a way that the community has already endorsed. So there's questions about how people feel about the design and the physical features of the neighborhood where they live. And if it supports their lifestyle and getting around the community the way they like and if it supports their health. There's a couple of questions on housing and housing actions, specifically a question on permanent supportive housing. Which is a specific type of lower-income housing that Wenatchee and other communities are required to plan for. Barring a couple of questions from that regional R Valley, Our Future Survey with a little bit of tweaks to make it specific to Wenatchee. The Confluence Parkway project is an upcoming major infrastructure investment in Wenatchee. And so there's a question there about how to leverage that for other public benefits that maybe go beyond just transportation. And some questions about the future of the economy and what type of businesses and services people feel might be lacking in Wenatchee. And so that'll help us kind of inform maybe some of the economic development and marketing and business recruiting efforts that the city can focus on in the coming years. Then a couple of mobility questions, really asking how people get around today and how they would like to get around in the future. And whether that's, you know, driving, walking, biking or taking transit more. And what do we need to change in the city's transportation system to accommodate people's different preferences? And environment, we've got a few, it's a bit of a work in progress, but that'll be probably some questions about climate change. Perhaps also in this area, but also there might be an additional supplemental survey in the, later in the process, specific to climate change and resilience as well. And then lastly, we'll have a couple of standard demographic questions that are just optional and used to see if the people responding to the survey. If, how representative they are of the actual community as a whole and see if we're reaching people representatively.
So, actually leave it there for a second, so we've been working with staff and the rest of the consultant team on this. You know, there are some challenges with, with the surveys, but, you know, we've had pretty good luck. I think even in the past year, in our value of future, I think a really good turnout. So you can really, i- it's, it's great the numbers that we can get back with these surveys. I mean, it's a limited amount of information, we also have to usually put multiple choice questions because they have to be easy to tabulate. Because, you know, as much as you kind of want to be open-ended questions, tabulating them can be a nightmare. So, so we've been working on it, trying to figure out what types of questions and info are both interesting. And educational from the participant's standpoint and what's gonna help us in the plan to come up with. You know, to help us create the vision statement, goals and policies and action statements, action items that. That get you further down the road, so.
I think we went into this a bit, but again, here's that character areas map. That will be a little bit updated to make it even more readable. So, but some of the specific questions are asking people to identify what parts of the city that they live in, but also where they work. And where they shop and where they visit, and that'll kind of help us connect some of the dots in terms of transportation and employment centers. And maybe compare that to past information to see how things have changed. We will have a, a series of photographs and examples of recent developments or, or other infrastructure improvement in the different sub areas. And asking people how they feel if this has improved the way that the different areas of town have functioned. Or if they've improved people's lives or quality of life, or if they've degraded their experience of Wenatchee in some way as well. And then also asking, so that's kind of looking at the past and what's happened, but also asking people to look forward to the future. And what they would like to see change in these different parts of town, whether that's directing housing or commercial development in a specific area. Or better ways to get around the city streets or more investment in parks in certain areas and things like that.
So with that, we, we'd like to ask council and planning commissioners some questions here of, you know, what's more, what's important with this project? What are our priorities? So, so we've got four questions here, you know, what will make this plan successful? How will we know the plan is successful? How important is the process versus the final product? You know, and what's most important to study in this plan? And maybe it's for time simplicity sake, maybe if we wanna go around and have people just. Give us some responses to these and you can give each one of them or just answer one of them. But it would be good to hear from, from you all to help us figure out how we do this plan and tailor it. Again, the process and the, and the product and just know what, what parts of it are most important to you. So I don't know, maybe if you wanna go council first and planning commission or just open it up to the whole, to all of you together.
Definitely planning commission first, but.
Okay.
Put them in spot, no, I, I, I will just say, you know, obviously part of this has to do with state regulations. And so a success is fulfilling those obligations. Or, and this is a process to, to help us what's for our community to. The easiest transition or the easiest what we think is best for our community to, to help get to those requirements. Is that a correct, is that a correct statement?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be a successful, knowing what, for sure what, what we have to do and how, how do we get there? So I, I'm just throwing that out, but now I'll go back to Alicia, make her, put her on the spot.
So I think obviously one of the, the most important priorities to study in the plan is housing. I think that was clear tonight and has been clear. And the other thing I would add is that how important is the process? I think it's the, of, of most importance and bringing in the, the community feedback. Before any decisions are made.
And I think it's, it's a complex process or problem and obviously we want more supply, well, except not next to me. So how, how do you do it first to, so the, prepare the community for, yes, you have yours, but other people will be moving here. Or will be growing up here and wanting to buy housing or rent housing, how do we make that possible? And we have to, if you wanna be successful, we can't just have a beautiful plan that's completely impractical. What are we doing about infrastructure? How are we gonna have enough sewer capacity, water capacity? What about that second water source for the city if we're talking about climate change, you know, what are we gonna do there? So how do we have the infrastructure to support this greater density and where's the density gonna be? Practically, I saw two columns up there on the survey answer of like, what are you worried about? It's supply and keeping downtown vibrant. Well, that would also maybe be the best place to have the highest structures, people can tolerate that in the downtown. Maybe not, you know, next to the urban and wildlife interface area, so just being practical.
Good, thank you.
Jose, let's just go, if you don't mind, let's just go around.
Well, thank you, man. That's, you got me thinking, you're right. And in order to put this in place, and I've been, how do I say this? My mind has been going on and off, thinking and putting apartments, duplexes everywhere in the city and trying to, trying to grow up. Because there's no more, there's no more land and, and it's true, we need the infrastructure of the sewer, the water. There, there's a lot of, lots of fighting, I can't, I can't say at the moment what's going on, but I mean. I can't say at the moment what's going on, but I mean, I don't want to speak too much. This is going to be a success in the future. We need that communication with our business owners, with our agriculture people, with our people that are productive in every business in our valley, to see how we're going to grow, how we're going to expand, what's going to be the need, what's going to be the necessities and stuff.
Along the similar lines, I think what will make this plan successful is the community buy-in. And I think it's really important to get a really diverse set of info and buy-ins. So residents, individuals, but also businesses, and making sure that there's a diverse set of businesses that have been able to provide that feedback. How will we know it's successful? By that buy-in, I think, based off of the amount of input that we receive and data that we're able to collect from that. Process versus final product, I think that the process, for sure, is the most crucial because people are very passionate about this community. And if we want to do this for the community, then we need to do it with the community. So, process for sure.
Not sure how much more I can add, but definitely, echo what they said there. Community engagement and transparency, I think, are key. Getting a diverse, diverse feedback, not just looking for the answers you want, and, you know, really going out there and getting as many viewpoints and ideas. And, yeah, I've been learning a lot from ADUs to middle housing and all this. I think it's cool, and I think, yeah, sometimes, change is inevitable, but we just, yeah, we just gotta, I don't know, you know, plan for the future in a way that kind of supports everyone's interests and not, you know. Yeah, just be, what I love about Wenatchee is the people. So if you let, the more the people know, the more the people are involved, I think the better things, the results are going to be.
Great. If I can interject really quickly and respond. We've been, Scott and I have been working with Commerce on these fact sheets and info related to many of these state laws that are coming out, ranging from co-living standards to the middle housing bill. So, I'm sure we're already doing this, but maybe the more we can do to spread the word and use RCD's website, and whatever else, to let people know that these, there are some of these changing laws, and the city has to comply, and, you know, there's some cases where, you know, cities don't want to do some of these things, but they have to, to comply. And we're trying to help them, but we could at least, let's see what we can do to make sure that we're educating and getting the word out, and providing the cross-links and all that stuff. So we'll, it's something we can try to do.
We need to make sure we harness the relationships and the partnerships that we have, too.
Yes.
State, community stakeholders.
Here turns over.
Sorry. I can take as many turns as I want, Travis.
I know. That was just too easy to do. So, I agree with everything everyone else has said. I don't have much more to add, other than, the only way a plan can be successful if it doesn't sit on a shelf and we can implement it. So many times, we come up with plans, and they sit on a shelf, and we don't implement them. So if it's going to be successful, we have to have a good plan. We have a long history of coming up with plans and implementing them. You guys just spoke to the, you came back to see what we've done. And so I think if we engage and we get the feedback that we want, then we'll have the product that we want, and then we can not have that plan set on a shelf.
I think I'll have a follow-up question when we're all done here on related to that, and your experience with the plan, but first, let's keep going.
Just skip over me?
Yes.
You took the words right out of my mouth, Travis. I think implementation is everything. We can, you know, plan all we like, but if we don't actually get the housing units to be built, we haven't really done anything. So I think outreach to the people who are actually making these units come online, the builders who, you know, are going to be able to bring in 10, 20 units. The ADU focus is great, you know, maybe that gets us another 10 or 20 units a year, at the very most. But I think, you know, outreach to the people in the past and the present who are building in this community is super important. And also to let them, you know, to work with those people who are bringing those units online to make the code accessible, easy to understand, and also to make them aware of the new changes coming down, you know, from this new plan, so that, you know, they're galvanized to come in and build these other units. Because I know a lot of builders in town that, you know, they're, maybe they've built a few projects, and they're like, oh, the code's, you know, changing all the time, it's hard to keep up with things. So I think, you know, with this new comprehensive code update, I know that everyone's been working on making it really simple, easy to understand, and so that builders feel like they can actually implement it, actually come in and, you know, build those extra units that we really, obviously, so desperately need, since we're, you know, building half of what we need. And Wenatchee had no idea that's how much of a deficit we were at. So, you know, reaching out to those people who are actually going to be able to build those units, get the plan, implement the plan, Travis well said, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, sitting here, I think the plan will be successful if we have safe, sustainable communities, in terms of having proper network of transportation networks and affordable housing for people. We have seen the data that is collected, that most of them cannot afford, you know, houses. So that's something that needs to be looked into. And when it comes to process versus final product, I would say they go hand in hand. If the process is right, then obviously, the final product would be right. If the process that's carried out is not right, then we won't, the outcome of the process, it would not be right. So they both go hand in hand, is what I feel. And we know that the plan is successful because it has to be reevaluated again and again. It cannot just be shelved, like how one of the councilor members said. So we need to collect data to see if, you know, communities are happy, and whether what's been implemented is accurate, and make changes if need be, even down the lane. Like, you know, if you've started a project and it's not going well, then make, you know, changes and accordingly, implement the plan. And again, as I said, the most important priorities would be communities that are safe and sustainable. Because we are looking at something that would, wherein we are using land, which would be, you know, not using the entire land, but, you know, sustainability is something which we are looking for our future generations, and not using all the resources that we have with us. So that plays a major role, and taking into account disasters like fire, and, you know, flooding, and things of that sort. And that's when we can have safer communities, you know, and helping community be safer, please.
Thank you.
Can't add tons that haven't already been stated, but I, I think that one priority to keep in mind is the inclusivity of outreach, which I feel you, I'm sure you must have built into the process. People who live here love it here, and when you reach out to ask them about their thoughts about living here, they show up. So I think you'll get lots of good information. Just because it's top of mind, as we see things happening in California, and we know our very high wildfire risk where we live, and I don't know how much it's top of mind for, it's very easy to think, well, you live in this safe little place, and that couldn't happen here. But people are getting non-renewal notices, and insurance companies are evaluating what's going on worldwide and locally. And I, like I said, I don't know how much people will give that response to you, but it's important to pay attention to those effects of climate. And you can imagine what would happen to our area if there was a lot of loss of coverage, and then there was an event. Or if there was a big event, and people weren't able to reestablish themselves. I mean, what catastrophic impact that would have on our area. So, just, I'd send you that ray of sunshine right now, but.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Ruby. I'm from Southern Cal, and we believe, we've been talking about it. And this is a good chance to really look at that, especially with the climate and the resiliency work. But, yeah, it's something I've thought about quite a bit in the past week here. This has been great. I got a follow-up, actually, I'm not sure exactly how to try to frame the question, but mostly, it's about, you know, you use the comp plan, the goals and policies, sometimes, in deliberating on projects. And I'm thinking, you know, before I came to Makers, I was a current planner, working on subdivisions and conditional use permits and rezones. And that's what I remember a lot, using goals and policies to figure out how projects conform to them. But maybe, I don't know, any reaction you might have of how the current comp plan has been working, good or bad, or how it could be improved in the way the goals and policies are put together? Or just any, you know, are there any observations out there that could be helpful to us as we look at updating them, based on your work that you do here as council members? And for planning commissioners?
That's a great question for planning staff.
But you deal with these things sometimes, too. And just a question after Councilmember Hornby made some of his comments, it came up in my mind.
Sometimes, what's fair is when both parties struggle. And that's usually sometimes the correct way to go. In a contract, if both parties, once all said and done, are like, ugh! You know, nobody's happy, but nobody's unhappy. And that's the way I see how this is going to happen. And obviously, you got the outreach is the major issue, right? And the best thing that happens to me is when I have people in the community that say, "Mayor, I'm tired of you telling me the same thing three or four times." It's because I want to not disprize people. And I think that's the most important thing, one of the most important things. At least, we know we have to do it, at least that we have the process to go. And we end up with what everybody's mentioning here on the final, to implement and have a final product. Or at least, we know that we did everything we can. I think that's, I think that's the key. But, don't know if I answered your question, but that's my answer.
Any other thoughts on that?
I like it, what he said about the, it's either, and my dad always said, good business, all parties are happy, or are equally, you know, dissatisfied. It's kind of what I think, I learned a lot by being on this council about, you know, your tax exemptions, the incentives for builders, this and that, but there's got to be a balance. You got to look long-term, what's good for the city. And I think there's a lot of variables, right? So, I mean, there's always, the incentives, there's a lot of different ways you can incentivize building, I guess, or construction, whether that's securing, making it, making more demographic of people can afford to live here. I think the whole affordability is huge on that. You're going to build if you know you can sell, things like that. Material's always going to go up, there's all these variables. But I like what Councilman Horns said about implementation, actually. You got to actually do, do stuff, and then things will start moving. So that's, yeah.
Well, I will say that, you know, writing good goals and policies, it's very tricky. You know, you, you want to get all the topics there, but you don't want to have a lot of fluff. And there's some communities where, you know, oh, that sounds good, but there's just a lot of general vague things, and they don't have a lot of, at the end of the day, their, maybe their policies don't have enough teeth, or give enough guidance to how the city implements these things. So, what I've learned, at least, from being a public sector planner, and then as a consultant helping, is trying to strike that balance. You want to have enough teeth, sometimes, in some of the policies to make sure that you're, you can actually implement your goals. You know, things like getting good connectivity, you know, the one things that you have, like in your, if you're planning for the sunny side area up north, you want to make sure that when that area builds out, you got good plans for how your roads connect, and maybe you get some trails and things out there. So you might need to have some specific goals and policies to, so you can end up with good codes that can get you there. So, at the same time, you don't want to go too far and have policies that are like code language and lock you in, it may be something you don't want. So we'll help you with that. That's something that we've been, worked with a lot of communities on this, and we do a lot of code writing. So we understand how the policies work compared to the codes, and how you have to deal with them. So we'll, we'll work on that with Burke and the rest of the team and staff, and come back with you with some proposals as we get down the road here. Make sure you hit that right balance of things, so. Just thought I'd talk about that a little bit.
I also, we've been talking a lot about new development, but I think there's also, we should look at inventory we have in our downtown core that's not being utilized because of current code. And I know I talked to Glenn about this a few years ago, and he got busy with something like housing, and, I mean, homeless and stuff like that, quit talking to me. But we have a lot of unused inventory in our downtown core. And I know there's certain requirements that have to do with fire code and sprinklers and those kind of things, but I think there's opportunity to look at grants and small loans that can help these developers tackle that barrier of having to install those things. And that would be an area where we could, there's a million square feet down there, or something like that, that's being unused, and that would be a great opportunity to bring people down into the core. There can be a portion of that that could accommodate lower income, so.
Good, thank you.
If we're talking pie in the sky stuff, that's, yeah.
All right.
All right. So with that, I think we're going to launch our engagement process, and we'll be back at some point in the near future to provide an update on that, and get into some of the technical analyses. So we had a question here for Q and A, I guess this is an opportunity, if you had any questions on the rest of the presentation, the comp planning, the housing analysis.
Or the survey coming up, yeah. Other than that, I don't know if staff had any other comments or notes to add. But otherwise, we've got some great information from you all, so. Look forward to following up.
Perfect. So your next step is going to get the survey question, next step.
Yeah, we're hoping to get the survey live in, hoping by the end of this month, but kind of depends on how fast we can finalize some of our editing, so.
All right. And then what we can do as a community is push it out on our social media, and.
Yeah, we'll work with staff and all your communication channels, use everything you have available to you.
There's, I know, stakeholder meetings, or interviews, or also.
Sorry, I'll speak from back here, but we'll have some interviews, and also, and so we've been working with staff to identify which groups and people we want to specifically begin, okay, to frame the process. So the vision survey plus the interviews, forming our specific housing and climate teams, communicating that all in one place.
Okay, that's great. Then Glenn, you know, we might as well be the best we can, because I'm sure we might get some public disclosure. Everything we did tonight, let's try to put something together that we can somehow, if we get an email or somebody, we can just push it out to people, or whatever. Just regarding the slides tonight even, let's put together something. And I believe there's some people in the community who would probably say, hey, that was a little fast on a couple of slides, or myself. And so let's get that somehow out there that we can, you know, be as active as we can.
Definitely, and we'll put the slides on our website.
Yeah, perfect, yeah, if we can just do, let's do that, and then we can just grab links and send it to people, or whatever, okay?
Thank you.
Great presentation, thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one last comment, and we talked a lot about the process. And so, one more opportunity to invite everyone to participate. And I think we need to go beyond, if you are a member of an organization, if you represent an organization that has reached into the community, let us know, right? you represent an organization that has reach into the community, let us know, right? Talk to your organizations and invite us to come to your meetings, board meetings, whatever it is, right? We will come to anybody's group, anyone's meeting and share this conversation, invite people to take the survey. So to council, planning commission, public who's here this evening, thank you. And we can only reach the people that are, that we can get to, right? If we, if we get the survey out there and it doesn't reach certain demographics of our, of our community, then we're not, we're not doing it right. So we need everyone's help to get this survey, to get this process into everyone's home, everyone's phone, everyone's computer, and into places where they are, right? So we, we want to be where everyone is at to have this conversation again, multiple times. So we just, we need everyone's help to get the word out.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen.
Well, thank you, Planning Commission and City Council to come. I guess that's it.
Yeah, great, thank you.
That was nice. It's great to actually get together and I would like to talk to a couple of people I haven't met before, if you don't mind. So I was very impressed with everybody's comments, so, and their insights. Thank you, everybody.
Good points, man.